I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Andy, can you take real call please?
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detschel?
Here.
Mrs. Detschel?
Here.
Mr. Tietzschor?
Here.
Just for everybody's information, we have our candidate elects that'll be sitting and watching the board meeting, watching us go through the kind of the informatics of our school board software, just to get them a little bit of experience for when they come in in January and get sworn in.
So we're going to start out tonight with some special presentations to honor a couple of our staff members who are no longer with us. So we have Colin Kleimer and Valerie Cook, who will eulogize Ally Kirsting, a teacher in the district who passed away earlier this year, and we want to make sure that we honor her memory and all of the work that she's done in the district.
Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to honor my wonderful colleague and my sweet, sweet friend, Allison Kirsting. Allison Kirsting, age 47, passed away peacefully on September 3rd, 2021. She was born here in Cincinnati, Ohio, to Robert and Janet Gravitt. She married Kevin Kirsting, also Cincinnati, on October 5th, 2002. Allison taught 5th grade at Corrine Elementary for over 20 years and then two years at Taylor Elementary. Allison had the pleasure of touching, of teaching in the district she grew up in. She was passionate about her family and friends and touched thousands of lives. Allison is survived by her loving husband of 18 years, Kevin Kirsting, her awesome daughters, Carly and Caitlin Kirsting, her mother Janet Gravitt, her brothers Brian and Robert, her in-laws Gary and Karen Kirsting, her brother-in-law Jeff and Casey Kirsting, and her seven nieces and nephews, and many extended relatives and friends. And those are the basic facts of Allison's life, but they don't even scratch the surface of the amazing person that she was. I remember when I started teaching 5th grade with Allison in 1997 at Corrine. One of the first things she said to me was, "I'm only going to teach for 10 years, and then I'm going to leave and I'm going to cut hair." Well, 10 years came and went, but Allison never left. She had fallen in love with teaching. It was what she was born to do. And anyone who ever saw her in action in front of a classroom of students would agree. She was the teacher all the kids wanted to have. Her classroom was warm and welcoming, just like her. She cared about each and every student, and they knew it. Even years later, she kept in touch with so many of her former students and their families. And the long, long lines of people whose lives she touched waiting to pay their respects at her funeral attested to her lasting impact on countless lives. But it wasn't just students who adored her. Other teachers and staff did too. She had a knack for making every person she encountered feel special and cared for. She was great at writing special notes and cards to say, "Happy birthday," "Happy anniversary," "I'm sorry your dog died," or even just a funny card for a much-needed laugh, and she had the best, most contagious laugh. She was the best listener to students and grownups. She always had time for you, along with a word of encouragement, and sometimes even one of her legendary hugs. "Come on, bring it in," she would say, and you immediately felt better. Allison endured a lot throughout her battle with cancer. Yet through it all, she was a model of beautiful grace and selflessness, still thinking of everyone else before herself. She loved fiercely her family, her friends, and her students. She was the best Northwest School District could offer. A product of Welch Elementary, Pleasant Run Junior High, and Northwest High School, she returned to dedicate her career to her home community. She's the type of person we should all hope to be, the kind who make us better just by being around her. At the end of every school year, our PTA always asks us to write a farewell message to the 5th graders. Without fail, Allison would include this quote from John Wesley, "Do all the good you can by all the means you can, in all the ways you can, in all the places you can, at all the times you can, to all the people you can, as long as you ever can." And these weren't just words to her. She lived them every single day of her life. When she passed, she was wearing a shirt that said, "Believe there is good in the world and be that good." And she was. She was the best.
When I was asked by Superintendent Yager to eulogize both Ally as well as Kelly, when I had some conversation with the 5th grade team, Valerie, you were the person that I thought of first. Your entire team was very close with her. You, in particular, I could see the connection that you had from the time that I had walked into the building as the incoming principal. So I would just like to say on behalf of the district and Corrine Elementary, you couldn't have said it any better, and I appreciate all that you did. This was not an easy thing to ask you to do, but you answered the call, and she was right there with you. So I want to take this opportunity to thank you as well. It is with much pride and a heavy heart this evening that I'm also here tonight to eulogize not only an employee of the district, but a good friend in Kelly Howard. Kelly Howard was born on May 5th, 1970. He passed on October 7th, 2021, at the age of 51. Kelly was an employee of the Northwest Local School District for over 21 years and was loved by many. He was a proud graduate of Northwest High School. He attended the Northwest Career Center where he studied facilities maintenance. Kelly rejoined the Northwest local family March 3rd, 2000, as an employee, where he became a custodian for Monford Heights Elementary and White Oak Middle School. In 2011, Kelly became a lead custodian for White Oak Middle School, and he later transferred back to Monford Heights. And in 2016, he began working at Corrine Elementary, where he remained working as our lead custodian. And it was during the time at CE where I came to know Kelly as a person, Kelly as a worker, and Kelly as a friend. Kelly had a knack for making others around him better. He would truly do anything that the district, the maintenance supervisor, or any staff member knew that if a job needed to be done, all you would have to do was reach out to Kelly, and it would be taken care of and completed the right way the first time. Kelly and I would often talk about his weekends spent with his wife, Chris, and they could be found together on his Harley or attending a rock concert of a famous group or a cover band. He would share his love with me for Kentucky basketball, and the love of his mom and his dad, and a quick story about his brother. And those were the times that I cherished because I knew they were real conversations about what truly mattered in Kelly's life. Kelly Howard will be missed by the Northwest Local School District, by Corrine Elementary, and everyone that had the pleasure of getting to know him. And I want to thank the board the opportunity to stand in front of you and eulogize two wonderful staff members of this district and two staff members that were a part of this community. And I hope that you would lift their families up during this holiday time in prayer, and just make sure that, you know, I know our staff is going to do what we can to check in on those folks. But truly, when we think about Northwest and our whole mission being go beyond, they did it every single day for our kids, for the staff, and for this community. So thank you again.
Colin, Lindsay, do you want to help? For both families, we have a token of our sympathy and the loss that they've experienced. On behalf of the district, I want to offer condolences, but also gratitude and thanks for sharing your loved one with us. We are better because they were a part of our community. I remember for a long period after Ally passed, secretaries would stop me and just talk about, "She taught my son," and they would explain to me how she made them feel. And the heart that you described was evident in everyone I talked to about how they felt the love for their child in her classroom. And that's a true testament to her as a teacher and her as a person. And I came into the district with Kelly Howard. We both worked at White Oak. He also had that heart of Northwest, that servant heart who cared about people and cared about kids. And we are a better organization, and I know I'm a better person because I got to know Kelly. So our hearts are with you, and we appreciate the opportunity to have them grace our presence. Thank you.
I want to start off by saying thank you for sharing your loved one with us. If you've had a child go through the district, you know that it's not a job. You become part of their family. And it's evident by the impact that both of these folks have made on everybody. I can remember shortly thereafter, out in front of Corrine Elementary, everybody gathered for a moment for this, and it was very impactful to watch everybody that loved these folks come together. It was... So my condolences as well, and if there's anything that we can come around you as the school district or anything personally, please don't hesitate to let us know. We'll do anything that we can.
I think we should give a round of applause for their service to the district.
Absolutely.
With that, we're going to move on with the meeting, but we know that you shared your evening with us, and we appreciate that. And we know that if you need to leave now so that you can commune with each other and continue to share stories, I'll just share one story that I heard recently that impacted me. It was a lady who had talked about her mother passed, and she was talking to her granddaughter. And the granddaughter was trying to understand what this means when someone's no longer here, or the granddaughter. And the mother sat with her and said, "Close your eyes, honey," and just sat with her in silence for about two minutes, and then afterwards said, "Was I still here?" And the girl said, "Yes." And she said, "How do you know? Could you see me? Could you touch me? Could you hear me?" And the girl's like, "I couldn't." And she's like, "Then how did you know I was here?" And she said, "I could feel you." We always feel those people there
and Regulation for Food Service. So we have Lisa Robison, who is our food services supervisor,
with us. So even though they're not here, we know that they still are in our hearts
who is here to review the annual compliance report with us. Thanks, Lisa.
and in the hearts of the people around us. And so continuing to share that love and support each other and know that we support you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to try to hold it together after that. This will not be, hopefully, bringing you to tears unless you're that bored, but hopefully not. Today, we're going to discuss the Nutrition Standards and Student Wellness Administrative Regulation. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the why. Why do we need a wellness policy? Why do we have nutritional standards, things like that? Together, parents, school staff, and students create a healthy school nutrition environment because better health equals better learners. And kids with healthier eating patterns and enough physical activity tend to have better grades, remember what they were taught in class, behave better in class, and miss less school time. We've been working pretty hard on developing a comprehensive wellness policy that helps create a healthy school environment. Our specific wellness policy talks about nutrition education, physical activity, food and drinks sold to students, food and drinks not sold but provided to students, food and beverage marketing, informing the community leadership, and more. In regards to food sold to students, all food and beverages sold in the school during the school day must follow Smart Snack standards. Food provided for free, for example, fundraisers and class parties can be exempt, but we highly recommend that they do follow those standards. We are in compliance, alignment with the Alliance for Healthier Generations School Beverage and Competitive Food Guidelines. However, I did want to point out, on September 15th of 2021, USDA released a waiver allowing fiscal action flexibility for meal pattern violations related to COVID-19 supply chain disruptions. That's a whole lot of jargon. What it means is we will not be penalized if we have to go off of the meal pattern due to supply chain disruptions that are happening nationwide. I have a short, little, two-minute video that is going to describe the supply chain disruptions so you can kind of understand where we are with that.
As in many sectors of our economy, K through 12 school nutrition programs have been greatly disrupted since March 2020. As the pandemic unfolded and meal participation dropped with schools closed, demand for products decreased. This resulted in fewer orders from schools to distributors and manufacturers. Consequently, manufacturers had to cut personnel and reduce or eliminate items to streamline inventory and manage operational expenses. Now, with the economy reopened and all at once, demand for products, particularly in the food service segment, is outpacing supply. So it should not come as a surprise that cafeterias all over the country look quite different these days, from socially-distanced tables, outdoor eating areas, and mass staff. Things are just not the same. Shortages and supply chain issues have brought great challenges at all points of the chain, from raw materials and manufacturing to packaging and transporting. In addition to food, this shortage affects the paper products used to serve meals, and even the trays that are a mainstay in every cafeteria, among other items. At the same time, many schools are affected by staffing issues, with workers retiring or leaving the profession. Yet, despite these challenges, school nutrition teams are working tirelessly behind the scenes to secure the necessary items needed to provide students with a healthy and balanced meal. They continue to order as early as possible and are adjusting menus to the best of their ability with alternative items in place of those they are unable to source. This means that you may see more frequent changes on the menu, so be sure to check your school's website often. With so many shifts, one thing remains the same, the commitment of school nutrition professionals to the children they feed. All over the country, school nutrition teams continue to be innovative and creative in their solutions to navigating these challenges, to ensuring students have access to healthy school meals. As essential employees, they have worked nonstop since the start of the pandemic, under very difficult circumstances, so they appreciate your understanding, support, and kindness.
I just wanted everybody to see that video, mostly because we have had to stray sometimes away from one of the regulations, which is having whole grain products. They're just not around anymore. Most of our cafeterias are spending...
Hi, SN readers. My name is Janet Scanlon, and I am the Digital Marketing Manager here at the School Nutrition Association. I hope you enjoyed reading my article, "Seven Tips to Perfecting Video."
Most of our kitchens are spending seven to 10 hours a week trying to find, just to find items to serve in the cafeterias. So our menus may look a little different. We may not have the variety we're used to, but we are committed to serving the kids every day. That's our primary goal. Most of these guidelines, as I said, we are still attempting to follow. Any food sold in schools must be whole grain rich. I said we have been having an issue with that. Or they have the first ingredient as a fruit, vegetable, dairy, or protein source, be a combination food, including at least a quarter cup of fruit or vegetable, and they must meet the nutrient standards for fat, sodium, calories, sugar. And when we're dealing with supply chain issues, that can be difficult to do. I would say we're 90% in compliance at this point in every single building. Beverages sold in schools also have restrictions. Every beverage we sell has a size restriction. High schools are permitted to have water, flavored water, milk, 100% juice, mid-calorie, and zero-calorie beverages. But elementary and middle schools are only permitted to have plain water, milk, and 100% juice. That's really all I have for today, but I wanted to thank everyone for your patience. Like I said, I know it's a different-looking school year, but we are here and we will be continuing to feed the kids. It just may be not what they're used to.
And if there are questions, Lisa can answer those, but I do want to take a moment and just commend Lisa and her entire team for the work they've done through the entire pandemic and continue to do, from the work they did to have meals ready for pickup while they're also trying to serve in-person students. Her department has juggled a lot, and they have done it tirelessly, effortlessly, and gracefully, and we appreciate you and everything your department have done.
Thank you. They really have been wonderful. Our department rocks.
So when we were handing out during the heat of the pandemic, when we were 100% remote, we handed out. What were we averaging, like, I could be completely wrong, so I'm going to throw this number out, like 30,000 meals?
The highest we ever had was about 47,000 meals in one week. Towards the end of the summer, it was averaging about 15,000, but we never really dipped below that.
And so the standards, obviously, that you have the day-to-day were standards that you had to bag up for?
Yes. Yes. In order to be reimbursed for any meal, whether it's a to-go meal or on campus, it has to meet the nutrient standards. And this waiver didn't come into effect until September 15th of this year. So every single meal last year was in compliance.
Well, I'm proud to say that we do get feedback as board members, and we've never had a bad comment about their food services. So thank you.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Thank you for running it so smoothly. Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, that brings us to legislative update. Mr. Tietzschor?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have anything new to report for my legislative update for this meeting. Thank you.
And student achievement liaison report?
I don't have anything this evening either, but just would like to encourage that continue to have kids present as much as possible.
Thank you.
Mark, can I go back to the legislative updates?
Sure.
And this is a question I want to ask the superintendent. House Bill 99 is passed by a great margin. For those people who don't know what House Bill 99 is, it is where if a teacher chooses to take the 20 hours of training, he's allowed to carry a gun in the classroom. I'd like you to address that issue. Do you have any comments about that at all?
That would only be if the Board of Education passed a policy that allowed that. We do not have that policy at this time. We have a phenomenal partnership with Corrine Township and have resource officers and support officers in our schools, and they travel to our elementaries for support. Greentownship does a great job of coming through and connecting with White Oak and Monford Heights. So we feel like we have a great partnership and presence with our local police force that are able to respond pretty quickly and immediately in some campuses where they're stationed.
I don't think that answers my question here. The question is, if they take the 20 hours of training...
No staff member in this district would be able to do that at this time because we don't have a policy that allows it. So there would be no option for that to happen right now.
But if it's passed by the Senate, the Republican Senate in Columbus, signed into law by the governor, who is Dewine...
It's actually in our Neola policies for information for tonight to be updated and voted on in January, correct?
But it doesn't allow... But it requires a policy. So it doesn't say that because of that they can, but they would only be permitted by board policy. So a staff member could not bring a weapon on campus.
Okay. Anything else? Comments? Butler Tech updates?
Yeah, I just got back from New Orleans. We went down for the ACTE, the Association for Career Tech, their national convention. And we had 12 teachers and administrators that presented at six different times at the convention, and they did a fabulous job just talking about the programs, our fifth-day experience that they run now, and just the amount of interest from these administrators and teachers across the country, and just how Butler Tech is just kind of above the cutting edge, and it's just unbelievable, the job that they do. So we were down there for three days, and yeah, it was very, very, very valuable information that they gave out.
Awesome. Yeah. Any questions for Jim? Next brings us to reports from any employee organizations.
None for tonight.
And that brings us to community comments. And we have one comment, but first, I will read our highlights of our policy. "The Northwest Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to listen to Northwest Local School District residents' comments, suggestions, and concerns on educational issues. It is important to remember that the Board conducts the meetings in public, but the meetings are not a public forum. The intent of the meeting is to allow the Board to conduct the needed business. Northwest Board of Education meetings are conducted using Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised. Most matters which fall under jurisdiction of the Board may be addressed during the community comments section in the Order of Business. The Board will not discuss negotiations and personnel in an open session. Any concerns and comments about individuals ought to be brought to the attention of administration. A school district cannot discuss personal student information, whether or not discipline was imposed on a student, nor the reason for that..." So, we were down there for three days, and yeah, it was very, very, very valuable information that they gave out.
Awesome.
Yep.
Any questions for Jim? Next brings us to reports from any employee organizations.
None for tonight.
And that brings us to community comments, and we have one comment. But first, I will read our highlights of our policy. The Northwest Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to listen to Northwest local school district residents' comments, suggestions, and concerns on educational issues. It is important to remember that the Board conducts the meetings in public, but the meetings are not a public forum. The intent of the meeting is to allow the Board to conduct the needed business. Northwest Board of Education meetings are conducted using Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised. Most matters which fall under jurisdiction of the Board may be addressed during the Community Comments section in the Order of Business. The Board will not discuss negotiations and personnel in an open session. Any concerns and comments about individuals ought to be brought to the attention of administration. A school district cannot discuss personal student information, whether or not discipline was imposed on a student, nor the reason for that decision, because disclosure would be a violation of state and federal law. The following guidelines will be used for public commentary at our Board meetings. Individuals wishing to address the Board must complete and submit a request-to-speak form. Individuals will preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation, if that's applicable. Each person will be given three minutes to speak on their agenda items. Public commentary is confined to that portion of our agenda. Individuals will be recognized to speak once on a given topic. All statements shall be directed to presiding officer. No person may individually address or question Board members, district administration, or members of the public in attendance. No response to the speaker will occur from Board members, district administration, or members of the public attendants during this time. Appropriate follow-up by district administration may occur at a later time if that's warranted. No more than 15 minutes will be allocated to community comments. Repetitive statements may be ruled out of order by the presiding officer, and the presiding officer has the right to terminate the participation of any individual if the person violates the rules of good order. Laws of the state of Ohio determine the powers and duties of the Board of Education, the Superintendent, and CFO Treasurer. And we've had, we've had one submitted this evening, and it's the one and only Greg Ensco.
Your disclaimer is longer than what I even had to say. That's a great disclaimer. I really just wanted to thank all of you for your hard work and dedication and the time that you put into this community, because time is the most valuable thing you can give. There's one person in particular that I did want to acknowledge, and that would be Pam. So, the time you put in here is, it's just been, I don't even know how many years it is, probably longer than I've been alive. I'm trying to get kicked out, sorry. No, no. But no, Pam, thank you so much for your service. Thank you all for your service, but especially Pam. I mean, it's just, man, that's a long time. Go be with those grandbabies and enjoy your retirement. So, that's all for me. If you guys ever need anything, don't hesitate to reach out. I love you guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, Greg. All right. That brings us to the adoption of the superintendent consent items.
For the consent items this evening, we have our personnel, our personnel items. We have two retirees, seven resignations, seven initial appointments, one change in status. We do have three driver and trainings that are on there. Those are drivers who are going through the process to be certified to be a bus driver. That takes about six weeks. We have a sub-bus driver, a van driver, and then there are two job descriptions. One is revision and one is a new one. For business, we have donations from Blackbaud to PRMS, Woodland Foundations to PRE, and Side by Side to Corrin High School and Northwest High School. And then there is one out-of-state field trip for Northwest High School Wrestling for them to compete in a match that is out-of-state in Covington. With that, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
Second.
So, I just have a comment. So, whether it's one mile or 100 miles-
Out-of-state is out-of-state.
It comes to us.
Yes.
We're going to Covington.
Yeah, the out-of-state wrestling trip is to Holmes High School-
Yes.
For those that weren't interested in what I was commenting about.
The vote passes five to zero. Next, fiscal consent items. Amy?
Yes, good evening. First, on the fiscal consent items is the November 15th regular meeting minutes to dispense with reading of the minutes and approve what was listed. Then we have our October financial report. Our all-funds balance was a little over $70 million, and our general fund unreserved balance was $35 million. Our revenues for the month of, or year-to-date are $41.9 million, or about 42% through the year. As we get closer to December, revenues start to go down, or get closer to our 50%, and then we get our taxes again in January, February. So, our taxes are a large percentage of our revenue. And then for our expenditures, year-to-date is $28 million, or about 28% through the year, and we're at 33% for the year as of October, so we're doing well with our expenditures. The investment-weighted average return is .44%, and I have been asked questions on that since our last meeting. And because we are a public school district, we are, the Ohio Revised Code has requirements on what we can and cannot invest in, and most of it is state treasury bills, which are .25%. So, we're a little bit above that. We're above benchmarks. And our latter investments, try to stretch them out as far as possible to try to get a higher rate of return at the moment. We also have our list of monthly bills, or our routine bills, plus we purchased a van. We had some roofing done at Houston and Pleasant Run Middle. We also had a chiller repair cost, some bus repairs, staff and student software, our attorney fees. We paid for our educational visioning as part of our facilities project. Corrin High School Soccer had a fundraiser. We had a grant refund that we had to return, curriculum supplies, our SOR membership, and auxiliary and grant fund payments. We also have the to accept, approve, and appropriate. So, Pleasant Run Elementary received an $11,000 donation from the Wulord Foundation for their kindergarten programs. So, we'll need to have the Board accept that, approve it, etc., create the fund, and appropriate the fund so that they can spend them. And then for December, we do our quarterly appropriation update. So, we're updating it based on our November forecast, as well as similar to like this board donation and the fund we've approved, things that we've done since our last appropriation resolution, as well as budget increases. So, student activities may get more money, and they'll want to increase their budgets, or the grants change through DEE, athletics, things like that. So, with that, and our November forecast included vacant positions that we hadn't already had budgeted, and also the Wellness and Success Funds, because the state changed the way they're doing the funding. So, with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
So, motion in the second, or is there any discussion?
Just thank you for the generous donation for the kindergarten program at Pleasant Run Elementary. So, that'll be a big, big help.
And fiscal consent items pass five to zero.
Next is some resolutions, but before we get into the resolutions, I'd like to remind everybody where we're at, and where we've been, and where we're going. So, I'm gonna do an update on our building project. In November 3rd, we did a presentation where we identified our needs. Remember, we had our education visioning team and our community advisory team meeting over the last several months, and ended with a recommendation that was presented at the November 3rd Board Meeting. As a summary, they gave of our existing school facilities. And with that summary came that for our current pre-K8 needs, we have $40 million in immediate needs just to be warm, safe, and dry, and this does not include Corrin El or Corrin Middle. This is the rest of our pre-K8 buildings. And then in addition to that, there's $106 million in long-term renovation costs to bring our pre-K8 buildings up to educational standards. So, that's $146 million of current costs right now that we would need to invest in, in our current facilities. That also just pretty much patches our current facilities. It does not renovate them or change them. Well, the $106 million would bring it up to educational standards. But the $40 million is just the patch to keep it warm, stay safe, and dry. As a school district, we are limited by the Ohio Revised Code at a 9% debt limitation. Currently, we have $88 million available in our 9% debt limitation, and we just discussed $146 million worth of current needs. There is an exception to the 9%, but that is only if you are in the state ELP or CFAP program. Then you can borrow the limit up to whatever you need per the program. There is no 9%.
Can you explain that for the audience?
Okay, so the ELP is the expedited program where you locally fund your program in advance. And then the CFAP program is the construction facility program where your credits and everything you're earning up through the ELP program is then applied to the CFAP program, so that you, it's like your overall construction project through, with a partnership through the state.
So, CFAP's your co-funded project with the state?
The lottery and the match, and correct, right.
In our 2018 master facility update where we built the three new elementaries, we were in the ELP program so that we were earning credits toward the CFAP. Sorry.
That's all right. So, as Daryl said, our phase one, we were earning credits in our, for our three elementaries in this, in the ELP program towards the CFAP project. And so to maximize our ability to meet all of our needs, including our high school needs, we have phased it out where we would have two ELP projects, one we've already completed, the one that has been recommended, which would lead us up to the CFAP project where we could address our high schools. Once your CFAP project is complete, you can no longer be above that 9%. So, with our immediate needs and the 9% limitation, we would not be able to meet our needs without entering into these programs. And by phasing it out, we're trying to stretch the costs over time so that our community can afford to address the needs of the buildings. So, as the recommendation from November 30th, the red is the pre-K8, which would be Houston preschool, a new Corrin Elementary, renovations to Monford Heights Elementary, and two new middle schools, with a phase three to address the high schools in the future.
And when we get to that, we would, after phase two, we would engage the community again in another update to really get in-depth with the community around the high schools and our vision for high schools. So, right now, we have the two high schools on there as a placeholder. But before we get to that last phase, which would be that co-funded project with the state to address our high school needs, we would go through a process to engage the community to really determine our high school needs and what our vision is for the high schools, and then that would be our co-funded project. But there would be another process to really analyze that need and define that before we get to that point.
And so our next steps are starting tonight, our resolutions, so that we can provide access to 21st century learning opportunities for all of our preschool, elementary, and middle school students to improve our operational efficiencies and to enhance our safety and security measures and equipment. So, with that, I'd like to first ask the Board to approve a resolution declaring the official intent with respect to reimbursement of temporary advances made for capital expenditures to be made from subsequent borrowings. What this will allow us to do is if we have to pre-fund something before we sell the bonds and receive revenue, by passing this resolution, the bond funds can reimburse the district for it. It's a timing thing. Not that it would have to happen, but it gives us the option, opportunity.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Motion second?
Oh, second. Thought that's what you-
I thought you were saying-
You said second. I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any? I just reiterate that the master facility plan, we had over 3,000 responses with the survey, so it was a good sampling from our community about what direction our future compass will be pointing, so.
I think that's been the most that we've had in a long time.
Which is great.
Yeah.
That passes five to zero.
Next is a resolution designating Bradley Paint Advisors as our municipal advisor for, for the school district. And what our municipal advisor will help us do is with the structuring and the sale of the debt. So, they're working for us and with us, not like the underwriter or the bondholders. They're part of us to help us make sure it's structured and in our best interest. So, with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve a resolution designating Bradley Paint Advisors as the municipal advisor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussions? I'm assuming this entity is, they do this for the school districts, are very familiar with all the informatics of all this?
Yes, and we've used them with our refundings and in the process to start talking about this piece, and they've been working with it.
And that resolution passes five to zero.
Next is a resolution to retain our bond attorneys. Our bond attorneys are, we use Denzmore, Fred Reilly. He's also helped us with our previous bond sales, as well as our refundings. He also helps us with our annual filings that we have to do every year to our bondholders with the status of the, of the district. So, with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve a resolution retaining the bond attorneys as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? That passes five to zero.
Next is a resolution authorizing the Board of Education in Northwest Local School District to apply for a ballot consent. And this is a requirement per revised, by the revised code because it exceeds 4% of our debt limitation. So, if it's over 4%, we have to go on the ballot, have a voted bond levy. So, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the, the Board of Education to apply for a ballot consent as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? That resolution passes five to zero as well.
The next resolution is to declare a special needs district. And what this is, is because our $133 million would be over our 9% limit of the $88 million, and we're currently not in an ELP or CFAP project. We have to apply for special needs to, to allow us to borrow above the 9% and then go into the ELP program, which would have allowed us to do above the 9% anyway. But right now, the OFCC is in the process of updating their manual, which would give us more of a reimbursement, as well as more credits earned later. So, it's just timing to make sure we can maximize our dollars and our credits. So, with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the resolution declaring the Northwest Local School District to be a special needs district as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? And that resolution passes five to zero as well. Amy, you're on a roll, aren't you?
A lot of legality. Next is a resolution for the issuance of the bonds. Sorry, just certify the maximum maturity of the bonds and complice the issuance of the bond in the principal amount of $133.7 million in 37 years. So, recommended the Board of Education approve a resolution to certify the maximum maturity of the bonds.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Discussion? That resolution passes five to zero as well.
And finally, is a resolution- And finally, is a resolution declaring the necessity of issuing the bonds, submitting the question to the electors of the school district, and directing the fiscal officer to apply for authority to exceed the four percent and the nine percent debt limitations. So with that, both Daryl and I, Superintendent and Treasurer, recommend that the Board of Education approve a resolution declaring the necessity of issuing the bonds, submitting the question to the electors, and directing the fiscal officer to apply for the authority to exceed the four percent and the nine percent debt limitations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Just really glad that you're on top of all this and we're finally moving forward. Before, when those three new elementaries, it's been, Colrain Elementary, it's been a long time waiting, and it's time we move forward with that, so all element, all the kids get the same benefits.
That resolution passes five to zero.
Thank you. And the next steps will be, we'll file these with ODE and ODT for the special needs assessment, and also with the county auditor, and then more resolutions will come back in January.
Great.
Thank you.
But I think it's important to point out that the maximum maturity of the bonds was 133. The maximum amount it would take to upgrade our current facilities was beyond that. And for the 133, we get new elementary, we get new Colrain L, new Colrain Middle, we get a lot of stuff that will help the district move forward educationally for the kids and for the community. So thank you for the support. All right, so for information only, we do have a couple of things on here for you to review prior to the next meeting. We have the high school program of study. This is something that comes to you every December. It gets approved so that we can move into scheduling with the high school, and this approves all of our courses that will be offered for the next school year. There are a couple of new courses that are in there. There are three, a freshman band, freshman orchestra, and an acapella choir. Not that we don't offer freshmen band and orchestra now, but this would be a new course that would allow them to disaggregate students in a way that would really specialize them into programs so that they can really kind of rebuild the programs that we've been trying to work on for so many years. So those are important new courses that will be in there. We do have, as Matt mentioned earlier, a list of new and revised policies from Neola. The one on there that Joe mentioned was about weapons. There are two policies on there for our certified staff and classified staff. And the policy, even though it would be allowable under law, the policies that are presented to you would prohibit it for our district. And because of our relationship with the police department and our protocols that are in place, we believe that's the best course of action for our district. And then also on there are the proposed dates and times of the school board meetings for next year, beginning in January, that we will approve at the first organizational meeting.
Daryl, you have down here, you have the meetings starting at 6:30. Do we have to vote on that if we want to change those?
You just need to let me know, and then we'll bring the, we'll, we can change dates, times. So that's, look at it, give me a call. We can always bounce that around if we need to make any adjustments.
All right, that brings us to superintendent updates.
So for my update, I only have one thing that I want to address, and it's the fact that this is the last meeting for Joe and for Pam. Myself, Amy, and the entire administrative team just wanted to extend our thanks, gratitude, and appreciation to both of you. So as I talk, Lindsay's going to, Lindsay's going to bring some stuff up just to kind of show her appreciation. Joe, we appreciate the work that you've done since you've been on the board, the support for the students, the staff of the district. Pam, 24 years is quite an accomplishment. It's almost a retirement for a staff member if you would have been on, in a building for that amount of time. So the amount of time and effort and energy, blood, sweat, and tears in every elec, every campaign that we have, every levy, every bond issue, has not gone unnoticed. And we appreciate all of that time.
Thank you very much.
You both deserve some time off to rest, recuperate, but please don't stay too far away because you'll be missed.
Where's my car?
It's a, it's a, it's a matchbox. It's in there.
Thank you very much.
Although now that you're not on the board anymore, you could, we could hire you as a driver and train you, you can start driving a bus.
No, I could, I could be a substitute teacher. I've got a permanent certification.
We can keep you busy.
No.
But thank you, we appreciate the, we appreciate everything, so thank you. That's all.
Give the guys a round of applause. Okay, we have a restructuring meeting, the first meeting in January, and we have to vote on who will run that meeting until we elect our new president and vice president. And here it has, Mark Gilbert will act as the chairperson pro tempore, and, or the board member may wish to select another member. So we'll do that right now. I'll need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Gilbert as chairperson pro tempore.
Second.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to our closing comments from our board members. I'll let our last board members, their last meeting, I'm going to let them speak last so that they can end the meeting out on, on their flavor, if they will. So Jim?
Just want to thank everybody for their presentation and the eulogies. It's, it's tough to, you know, to hear all that stuff, so. And I just want to thank Joe for your four years on the board. And Pam, I'll give the rest of my time to her. Take her out the dinner.
Matt?
Yeah, just thank you for the eulogies memorializing, Ally Kersten, Kelly Howard, and thank you to Lori Robison for the presentation on our new nutrition program. And thank you, Joe, for your four years of service, and to Pam for your 24 years of service. That's impressive by any means to, you know, for 24 years of public service for the district. Thank you.
Can I see if Chris and Nicole have anything to say? Chris?
Yeah, Mark, I've spent probably about half that time with you, Pam. And we, especially on some of the tax issues over the years, we maybe had some disagreements, but I never doubted Pam's sincerity. If you factor in the number of hours that she's probably put in, I can just base it on the hours I've put in, Pam has probably put in 5,000 hours for this district, making a total of $3,000 a year in salary.
Oh, no, that was first half.
Oh, it was 75.
75.
75, yeah. I started with 75, and then we got a raise. But Pam, thank you very much for all you did, and, you know, you take time off and then run again. And Joe, I don't know you well, my man, but it's always been pleasant to see you at sporting events, and thank you for your, your time and efforts.
Sentiment, thanks to Joe and to Pam for their years of service. I'm very excited to serve the district, and I plan on taking Pam's advice to heart, which was to serve the district as a mom, and I thank her for that advice.
A lot of this will be redundant from what everybody has said, but I can remember my sister-in-law passing at Monford Heights, and we did a eulogy for her here, so that brought back a lot of, a lot of feelings for me. And it's in these situations that you look and you really truly see the impact of what the dedication is that our staff has on, it is literally, it's family. And so it's, I get kind of speechless, you know, a lot of times I just don't know how to, I get, get overwhelmed because I love hearing how much everybody loves our staff and how much they miss them. Pam, I, I've been thinking for the last couple of weeks about, like, where are all your fingerprints at in this school district? And they're everywhere. They're, they're everywhere. Like Chris was saying, 5,000 hours, I haven't done that math, but there is a lot involved to being on the school board. You know, when Nicole was talking to me, I said, you can put as little time in or as much time as you can want to put in, bare minimum, you need to come to the meetings. And Pam's never settled on that. It's always been above and beyond, so I want to thank you for that. Thank you for impacting my kids that went through here. I appreciate it. Joe, thank you for your four years, sir. We've had our back and forths. I really appreciate all the hours that we put in together. I wish you well on your next endeavor, and I have a feeling that you'll be back.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Merry Christmas to everybody. We won't see you guys before.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Yes.
Do I get to say anything?
Oh, Pam, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
You're last. Oh, Joe, I'm sorry. We're out of order.
I'm just kidding. I would, I revised this, my final address about 18,000 times in the last week. I was DMing at the beginning, but I settled down and I came up with this. First of all, I'd like to thank Pam Tetzler for many years of serving on the board. Toward the end of my term of office, I would like to think that we have become good friends. In light of the election results, I wish to congratulate the newly installed members of the board. I also wish to congratulate the Republican Party of the Township for endorsing these members in a nonpartisan election. The RNC plans have come to fruition. Politics is no place in education and safety of the students. That is political science 101, which I had to take. During the campaign, I received a threatening phone call. How did he get my cell number? He did mention he spoke to another board member. I don't know where that went, about my position on pro-choice and pro-life. How inane. My response is, it's a matter of conscience. Let the U.S. Supreme Court to decide. At the, at the polls, another voter asked me who I thought won the 2020 presidential election. I responded, and he said, I ain't voting for you. That's a good English phrase right there, I ain't voting for you. At least I was honest. In my tenure of office, I like to think that I had served the board with honesty and accountability. I was against CRT but offered a workable alternative, which was agreed upon by three other board members. I also followed the science over fiction when it comes to masking. I listened to the district personnel in the, the district personnel in the trenches and fought very hard for their opinions to be aired. We are at a district crisis level. The district is divided on many issues. I hope the members of the board will decide and vote for what is good for the students instead of historically catering to one group for some sort of favorite position. Issues have to deal with, they have to deal with masking, non-masking, vax, non-vax, book prohibition, state legislation, well, the HB 99, CRT, and hopefully the, the whole thing with the levy because there could be another round of budget cuts. To those in trench camps, I, I'd like to say this. Take the temperatures down. Start talking with each other instead of talking at each other. I was very happy to be instrumental in naming this new superintendent. It is my hope that he will continue to bridge the communication gap between the polarized factions. I have a novel idea. Both sides need to celebrate the achievements academically, athletically, and artistically. You like that alliteration? Okay. Four years ago, I promised to serve the people of the district to the best of my ability. I thank you for giving me that opportunity. Now I can relax and enjoy my wonderful grandchildren who I put on the back burner because of my responsibilities to the district. Thank you again, and goodbye.
Okay, Joe? Pam?
Jim asked me today if I knew what I was going to say, or if I had anything written down, and I, I do not. It's been an emotional day, so I'm not sure how I'm going to be able to talk. It meant a lot for Greg to stop here and, and say that. Joe, we can text each other who's got the cutest grandkids. I won.
I didn't even get an answer to answer that question.
Yeah, I want to thank Joe for your four years in these, last year and a half has been really good.
Absolutely.
Chris, I want to remind you of your last board meeting when you gave the advice of, to the new, new coming board members that, don't do what I do at the, did at the beginning. It took me a while, but I learned, don't micromanage. And I hope you remember that and stays that way. It's about kids. It's not about politics. I do agree with Joe, the frustrations of the political parties, but that's another topic, and I don't think that's going to change here in Colrain Township. What I hope is that the five of you continue to do what's best for kids, not what's best for outside people, it's what's best for kids. And nobody sitting up here is above anybody else. It's, we work as a team. Jim asked me tonight on the way here if I remembered my first board meeting, and I was trying to think, and, and I really don't, but what I do remember, Nicole as a mom, our youngest was in kindergarten. I do remember many nights, her sitting, I'm sitting on the floor and her with her book, and me on the phone with an upset parent. And I always took the call. And then I went to bed feeling like a horrible mom because my little girl fell asleep and I didn't get to read to her. But it's important to take those calls, and it's important to hear when people are upset. So always, always keep an open ear and try to find out. There's always, usually three sides minimum to every, every story. I don't know, I'm rambling, but I'm proud of a lot of things. Those three new elementaries, it sure took a hell of a long time for us to do it, but I'm sure glad we did it. And to be able to have a hard hat on, and Bob was there and us, and, and those shovels, and that was a great moment. And I, with what we voted on tonight and the work of, of everybody with that committee, I sure hope it's not long before you all doing that again. Because the kids and the staff deserve that. They deserve these state-of-the-art buildings. If our neighboring districts can do it, we should be able to do it. And we've proven we did it. We can do it with the three we already had. But we definitely need to move forward and, and take care of the rest of the buildings. The other thing I'm proud of is that we work together, and I think we hired a magnificent superintendent and treasurer, and we've secured them for quite a while now. And unfortunately, poor Daryl, his first, first months out of the gate, you know, we get hit by a pandemic, we've lost staff members, all that's gut-wrenching. But I know you're going to do a fabulous job. I know this is what, I remember when you won the Millican Award, and, and you in the classroom, and how you impacted so many students and, and your passion. And I know this is where you want to be, even though you could be at any school district, anybody would have snatched you up. And Amy, Jim's right, every time we're anywhere, they're always telling us how they're going to want you. And of course, Jim says a few words and says, no, they're not getting you. But it, it's just, I think we're becoming a team again, and I think that's what, we got to stay focused. And there's always ups and downs, and people are going to disagree on stuff, but you got to stay focused with the kids. And the, how impressive it is, our district will hold us. And how impressive it is, our district will hold us up against anybody. We served 47,000 meals in one week. Forty-seven thousand meals, number one, that shows the need, and the fact that everybody worked together, and we did that for these kids. And I don't think there's any other district that has any, any more dedicated staff, and I'm not just talking in the classroom, I'm talking to bus drivers, and I'm talking maintenance, and I'm talking to custodians. Some of my greatest memories of a kid in this district, I can remember being in student council at Pleasant Run Junior High, and I was in charge of the birthday club, and we went into the, to the custodian's room, and we took him a little Hostess cupcake, and he started to cry. And it's like, but he made, you know, he was so friendly and so, I mean, and his job was so important, but I, but I think we really made him feel special that day. And so this entire district staff is number one in my book, and there's wonderful things going on in the classrooms, and there's a lot of kids that have a lot of issues, that the barriers just to get to school, but knowing when those doors open, that our staff's there to love them and to help them and to do whatever they can to make their lives better. It's just the best. So I am going to enjoy my grandkids. This will be hard, this will be missed, and like Jim said, this is kind of weird, it's like you're retiring, but you're not getting a retirement. I'm like, yeah, you know, you're right. But anyhow, I want to thank everybody, and thank all of you for tonight, and I'll always be a cheerleader for this district, always. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the end of the meeting. Need a motion in a second?
Are you sure we don't need an executive session to keep them here for a couple more hours?
Yeah, yeah.
Are we letting Joe end this meeting?
I'm going to abstain. I'm going to second this.
Pam?
So moved.
Second.
That passes five to zero. We do have some snacks and cupcakes and things like that for anybody that wants to celebrate with Pam and Joe.